Good morning and welcome to the February 22, 2023 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Let us pray. Lord Christ, when you came among us, you were playing the kingdom of God in villages and towns. Granted, your presence and power may be known throughout the land. Have mercy upon all of us who live and work in Tyler and Smith County, and grant that all people of our nation may give thanks to you for the food and drink and all other necessities of life. Respect those who labor to produce them and honor the land and the water from which these good things came. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from January 25, 2023.
Move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Kyle.
The first item we have today is a request for a thoroughfare closure. This is an unimproved portion of Roberts Avenue located just west of Glenwood Boulevard and West Dobbs Street. As you can see here, it's just a triangle portion of this right-of-way that was never improved. You can kind of see it better here. It actually goes through where there's an adjacent house to the right-of-way that this disclosure, if approved, would be incorporated into that lot. There is a water line within that right-of-way. When the property is replanted into the lot, they will be required to dedicate utility easement for that. So staff that were, the plan to commission by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of the closure of this right-of-way, subject to it being replanted into the adjacent property within six months.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z1.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This is a request for a zone change from agricultural district to C1 light commercial district. This is located along Old Jacksonville Highway. The purpose of the request is to allow for the development of a commercial office building. The applicant plans, or they've already combined this property with the lot to the north on the corner of Blue Mountain, so they plan to develop that entire property as commercial use. The adjacent properties to the east are agricultural and is currently the location of a church. Also to the south, also a church, and to the west is outside the city limits. The request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the area as mixed use center. This would complement that goal. As you can see here, it's currently undeveloped. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by 5-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This next request is for a zone change from agricultural district to C1 light commercial, PMXD1, planned mixed-use development, and R1B single-family. And this is located kind of on the north side of North Broadway and the North Loop. The, as you can see here, is a large acreage of land that they are re-zoning portions of this into different zoning. Along the north side, it's generally going to be the commercial, and then the rest of it's going to be the residential use. Currently, it's a mixture of agricultural or single-family homes and then multifamily to the west. As you can see here, the future land use guide identifies it as a mixed-use center. All of these proposed zonings would complement the mixed-use aspect. Let's see here, so the corner of Broadway and North Broadway and the North Loop would be the commercial, and then it would transition into mixed use, and then all that blue area is a single-family. This request would help implement the Tyler First goal for new development in the north end, new rooftops. This is a large number of new residential units, so it would again further that goal. Of the notices that were sent out, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by 5-0 vote recommended approval.
We have one card here from Ed Thompson. If anybody has any questions for Ed. No? Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve. Z3.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ed, thank you for what you're doing in North Tyler. We appreciate you.
I thank you as well.
All right, Z4.
This next item is an annual code update to the UDC that we do related to annexation. Every year, we update the 20-year ordinance that helps prevent any challenge to any annexation within the past 20 years. Essentially, it's a text update to the code that revises the year from, in this case, it'd be from 2001 to 2002. And effectively, what that does is prevent any challenges to the legitimacy of any annexations in the previous 20 years. And so the request here is to update the UDC, Unified Development Code, to reflect that all annexations since December 31, 2002 are considered to be legitimate. So as you can see here, the map does show the city limits as of the end of the year on 2002. That's the orange area there. The current city limits is in blue. There was actually no annexations in the year 2002, so this map looks like it does last year. And with that, the plan to commission by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve. Z4.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z5.
This next request is a zone change from R1A, single-family residential district, to R1D, single-family residential, detached and detached district, RMF, multifamily residential, and C2, general commercial. Again, this is one of those zone changes that has multiple different zonings associated with it. I do have a, I'll just go through it here. It does show that the proposed R1D is adjacent to the existing single-family on the north side, and then it transitions to the higher-density multifamily and then commercial along, at the intersection of County Road 2120 or future Shiloh Road and Old Omen Road. The adjacent properties to the north are developed with single-family homes. To the west and south are currently undeveloped, and then to the east across Old Omen Road are developed with multifamily uses. Actually, there's this one here. So you can see the current zoning in the area. This request would have been the future land use guide to a mixture of single-family and single-family attached, multifamily, and then that general commercial at the intersection. The, as you can see here, it's currently undeveloped. There is a large water line that runs through the property that the development will have to, you know, make room for or stay away from. And again, here's the transitions of the zoning. So the applicant is intending to try to buffer the multifamily component from the lower-density single-family with another single-family district. Of the notices that we received, we received three in opposition with a total protest calculation of 29.62%. The concerns with, from the neighbors were related to not having adequate infrastructure to accommodate the new development, and then also concerns about water pressure and road conditions in the area, and then also another concern about removal of the trees in that area. The plan to commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle before we go to the new cards, or two cards? All right, I've got John Nix here. Do you wish to come speak?
Chief.
You should state your name and address for the record.
Mayor and Council, John Nix, 1515 Jeff Davis Drive. This is a tract of land we bought about 16 months ago and have been working on design and planning and kind of how we want its layout to relate to the other properties in the area. There are three apartment complexes across the street on Old Omen there, two Hamptons complexes, one Summerwood, and then we actually have one of our townhome developments behind Summerwood to the east there as we're developing the east side of Old Omen right there at the end as well. Spent a lot of time making sure that we create adequate buffers. We're about 340 foot at the closest from the single-family area, and we're creating a single-family detached buffer in between. We're making that a cul-de-sac so that we also reduce traffic in that area next to the single-family, so the single-family area would just be a cul-de-sac and it would be through traffic to the rest of the development to the south, kind of as a noise protector as well. And we've had good conversations. We walked, wife and I walked the entire neighborhood and got to talk to almost 80% of all our direct neighbors, and then since then have had phone calls with another. I think we're up to 90% touch with everybody in the neighborhood, had good discussions with everybody to address concerns and feel good about how we've laid up and how it's related to our neighbors there.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Nix? No?
The only question that I've got for you at this time, John, is the drainage plan that you're going to submit once you begin construction and submit all that, you'll have a drainage plan and everything.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. City's making us do this, it's nice.
It's a good thing. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
The other card is from Jill Wyler. Is Jill, Ms. Wyler, here?
If you can just state your name and address for the record. Jill Wyler, 3995 Chapelwood Boulevard. My main concerns with this development are, like were mentioned, the infrastructure. Bascom Road is the only south exit out of this whole neighborhood. It's crumbling and falling apart. We keep adding more and more development and more and more traffic, and that doesn't seem to be addressed. Water pressure has been an issue for years. We've been told that it's being looked into, but that never seems to be addressed either. My other concern with this is we're moving from single-family to a C2 zoning that seems to be a little extreme given the neighborhood. Don't know what else to say other than that.
All right. Y'all have any questions for Ms. Wyler? Am I pronouncing that right?
Pardon?
Wyler, is that right? Any questions?
So she's opposing?
Yes.
Is that what you?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Feel free to come up. I don't see where you cut out a card, but we'll sure let you speak.
I'll get it later.
Come on up, just state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Robert Sampson. I live at 628 Honey Suckle Hollow in South Lake, Texas. I am the landowner to the west of this, the entire west line there. And my wife and I purchased 67 and a half acres there back in June of this year, and we purchased that to enjoy the outdoors and the wildlife out there with our children for the rest of our lives, and our children decide what they do with it when they're gone. We were looking at multiple properties, and when we looked, I went through all the factors of looking through the zoning, infrastructure, root causes, efforts, and concerns for many recreational property, I noticed this is a zone residential. I wouldn't want any development there, honestly, but residential's less disruptive to the wildlife. Had we seen the zoning as being proposed for rezoning, we would have even looked at the property. It would have been off our radar. And in fact, since the plan of zoning commission, my wife and I have been looking at other properties. But I'm just opposed because I bought it with residential plan for there, which would still allow a lot of the wildlife here.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so are you referring to the bottom track down there that's zoned for?
Yeah, I think, I think for the most part residential that proposed to the top can be done except we had a setback issue or something. There was a, for that zoning, I think, was just there. So it's mainly more about the multifamily and the commercial down.
And with all due respect, really the only way that you can protect your property from, the property adjacent to it from being developed is to buy it.
It was on the market.
So I hate it for you, but it...
Yeah. We would have if it was.
Well, thank you for being here. Ma'am, feel free to come up and speak. Just state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I'm Mary Simpson. I live at 43 Tinstone, Brooklyn. My property does join the, right there to the south, I'm just on the west side, the southwest side of the water easement that runs through there. So to me, we're back at the same place that we were three, closer minus, years ago. If you recall, I think some of you on council have been there, and we had post-development of a senior housing or something like that that was on County Road 2120. The issue back then, and our chambers were full at that time because somebody got wind of it, okay, and I don't know, some of you may have been there, but it did create quite a concern in the neighborhood, both for the woods, neighborhood Chapel Woods and all in this area. And the issues then are the same now, which was infrastructure first of all. The County Road 2120 doesn't handle the traffic well now. It's not in good shape now, and the water pressure issues in the neighborhood. And so nothing, to my knowledge, has changed since then. The thought was then, let's address infrastructure before we start adding in all these extra, all the extra population. So with that said, you know, we're still, we've still got the same issues. I think the zoning is too generous in this case because on the second, if you can pull up the other, the one that's divided off? Yes, okay. On the second part, the middle part, yes, the proposed was, I think, three plus triplex whatever, but it's also open to the apartments, which creates even more density for an area that's not ready to handle this. So then when you go on down to the lower part to the commercial, again, the zoning is too generous for that neighborhood. If the Nixes did say they were proposing maybe a stretch of this building or something originally that the sound to the neighbors, and then storage was mentioned at that time at the P&amp;Z meeting, a gas station possibly on that corner, that issue's not conducive to that neighborhood. We don't have a gas station on the store, which is a more, I think, appropriate place for a gas station because it is not right in the neighborhood. And so again, I think all this can hurt, of course, the value of the neighborhood, product, property rights, person, and I believe in it. What you said, Mr. Warren, about the only way to protect yourself is to buy everything around you, and so I don't have the issue with the residential, but it's, again, the density, the infrastructure's not being addressed proactively. And so I just, with those two issues, that and the zoning for the type of the little shops, which also could open up to tattoo parlors or anything like that. Now, I realize that's not proposed, but we don't know if the Nixes will keep this property or even somebody else, and they do something different. So that's clearly zoning is too bad for that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Any questions for Ms. Simpson? All right. Thank you. Is Kate back there? Kate, can you just, can you come up?
Ed is coming.
Can you just kind of address the water pressure?
Darren is. He's asking what his answer is. You're going.
Right. So, good morning.
Good morning.
So as far as the water pressure goes, yes, this area has historically had water pressure issues. In 2018, 2019, we made some, we had a project which looped the water because the primary issue with the water pressure was due to the UT Tyler Charleston Park Booster Pond Station, and also because that line ran down Old Omen was a dead end. So all of the pressure was just, that stops decent pressure from flowing. So what we did is, a project was put in place that looped the 12-inch water line at the end of Old Omen and County Road 2120 over to Southwood in the Wood subdivision, so there would be constant flow of water through there. We did take pressure readings, and we continue to take pressure readings to ensure that pressures are sufficient. Back in 2019 when we did it, we were having pressures that did drop below the 35 PSI interim, in the mornings typically. Now, so I think it was our last reading was in 2021, we have PSI readings that are like 20 PSI to 25 PSI higher. So I think what, since there have been historical issues with pressure in this area, they are still seeing a dip of about 10 PSI when that valve opens, and so, but that dip doesn't take them below, you know, 58, 55 PSI. So they're well above minimum TCQ required pressures, which is 35 PSI. I know that was a broad stroke, but pressures have generally in the area increased by about 20 PSI.
Okay. So is there, are there plans, or can you discuss plans about whenever Shiloh Road is expanded?
Yeah, so when Shiloh Road is expanded, and they're, I think, about to be in the PER phase of that, we will be running that 12-inch water line even further over to Kent Drive, which has a 12-inch line on it, and that will help raise the pressure possibly even higher. But, and so that should help, and I'm not sure what the timeline is on that.
I might give him a spec. He might be, he might want to come.
You're asking about the title of the Shiloh Road. Right now, with the Plumbering Engineering Report, it'll be done here around May, and then we will, part of their duty is to, or Skilful Services is to update the cost estimate for the whole section. So then we will take that and then evaluate how that will fit in our budget. But right now, we don't have anything beyond the Plumbering Engineering Report in our plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there is something kind of in the works to improve the water pressure?
Yes. We, that is ultimately what our goal is, is to connect right over there. There's also, we have a master plan that we're doing, which should assist water pressure in the entire system by how we're going to operate our pressure zones. So all of this, yes, it does take time. As we grow and expand as fast as we have, our infrastructure does get strained, but we have made great strides in this area increasing pressure. But we do continue to monitor it because we do have residents that call and ask about it, but typically we do find that if the pressure is lost in the home, it's not lost at the meter or an outside faucet. So, and the pressures out there are about 60, 65.
60 or 65?
Yeah.
And the minimum's 35?
And then we're sorry.
All right. Any other questions for Kate or Darren?
I just want to find out if that's satisfactory with the constituents that are opposing. Wanted to find out if that's satisfactory with the constituents.
You need to come back up, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I understand where you're taking the water pressure readings because in my shower, I can take the shower head, turn it upside down, and I've got this much water pressure. And the neighbors complain about they can't learn their sprinklers because they're too much of a water pressure. We're at the end of the line.
Right.
But they kind of flush the line monthly outside of our property, so we have continuing water pressure issues, and we keep hearing, well, they're going to be addressed, and we can build a more, and the water pressure keeps coming in.
Well, the data that we've been talking about specifically was...
Kate, can you get back to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, the data that I was speaking of is specifically at Chapel Woods and Hill. So it's right here where it's located. We actually saw pressures at that fire hydrant, so we're not dating them in your home because sometimes there is a private issue of plumbing inside the home that we can't be responsible for.
But it's consistent throughout the neighborhood. You know, the neighbors are complaining about it across the street.
Well, and I understand that, and that's why we do put in the data log, right, so that we can consistently measure 24 hours a day for two, for two weeks of the data that we have back in 2021. And again, I would place someone out there and monitor it, but from 2021, I mean, the minimum at that time was like 94 PSI, which, I don't know, but that's what we were seeing at that fire hydrant.
Okay. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone coming up?
I've got a question for John. John, would you come back up? Is there a timeline on your construction project?
Oh, Mayor, just potentially next year to the single-family home area is probably as soon as we would have a completed product there if I started tomorrow, and I don't even have engineering started pending zoning. So, I mean, I wouldn't expect even the single-family homes come in. We're prioritizing the east side of the road. I expect to be in this area developing for the next 10 to 12 years. So this thing's going to take a long time to build out. I mean, you know, Gwinnett Estates, we've been there for 10 years, and we're just now finishing it. I mean, those things are not, I mean, it'd be amazing if I could completely develop it tomorrow, and that'd be great, but that's just not how it works. It's a slow process, and we engineer the whole thing along with the city, making sure we're addressing those issues like stormwater and water lines, as well as our sewer lines in that area as well. So, yeah, I mean, it's going to be a long process. This is not going to happen tomorrow, even if I wanted it to.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the only, the reason for that line of questioning is to just point out that the development and the infrastructure improvements are going to happen not necessarily at the same time, but going over a period of time. So that was the reason for the line of questioning. Okay, thank you, Kyle.
All right. Where we going to go from here?
With that, I move to approve Z5.
Second. Good man, thank you. Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project and please work with all the neighbors. All right, Z6.
This next item is for approval of a final plat. It's actually for approval of the variance associated with the final plat that City Council is requiring to view. This is a proposed subdivision, proposed four-lot subdivision. This is in the ETJ, the Exter territorial jurisdiction. It's down near, close to White House that, this, that blue line down by the red, or the green square there is the White House, city limits. And so just to put in perspective how far away from Tyler this is, but with it being in the ETJ, the city does review subdivision proposals in accordance with the interlocal agreement with the county. So this property is, they are proposing to subdivide the property into four lots. There is an existing street, Patrick's Path, you can see there on the west side. The UDC would require that the applicant... side. The UDC would require that the applicant or the subdivider extend that street into their, into their development, into their lot, either extend it through, all the way through to Magi Road or County Road 2195, or to provide a cul-de-sac or some sort of turnaround within the development. The applicant's request of the variance to that requirement, taken into consideration that Patrick's Path only serves as access for six lots and the location of the property far out into the ETJ. In the, in accordance with the interlocal agreement, staff did coordinate with the Smith County Road and Bridge Department about what would be required in this instance if this was under their purview to review. They indicated that since all of the four lots have access to the county road, that they would have required that extension of that street. When staff evaluated the proposal, we, our recommendation was to provide at least a turnaround easement at the end of that existing street to allow any emergency services to have that, that way to turn around in the event that they needed to. And with it being located in the ETJ, at the furthest extent of our ETJ, staff recommended approval of the variance with that condition on the turnaround. The Plan Commission also recommended approval of the plat condition on this, the easement you see there in the gray. And so, with that, the Plan Commission by a 5-0 vote recommended approval of this plat, subject to that, that variance being approved. They recommended approval of the variance, subject to the, to the easement you see there. And so, City Council, you have the authority to rate that variance as well, to allow this plat to be approved.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z6.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. R1, you still up here?
He's got the whole morning, doesn't he?
Deborah, we didn't need to include any language in that motion about the variance, did we? Or did we?
Is it part of Z6?
No. We're good?
Yes.
Okay, R1.
This is a, this is a request that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution in support of various affordable house, affordable housing tax credit proposals and the approval of the waiver of development permit fees in the amount of $500 for each awarded project. This is an annual occurrence that we have as well for the, for projects seeking resolution of support for, for the 9% tax, housing tax credit from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. The project has, gets a higher, or gets points awarded for their project if they have that resolution, or the local resolution of support. The, well, all the proposed developments or projects that are before us, we have two that, two that have that resolution and that incentive of $500 in permit fee waivers. All those proposed developments are targeting the elderly population. One of the projects, this first one here, Glenwood Gardens, is also helping achieve that north end revitalization goal of adding additional rooftops to the north end. This project, so I'm going to go into the projects here. The representatives are present for each one. This is Glenwood Gardens. This is located on Barron Avenue or Claude Street, just north of West Irwin and Glenwood Boulevard. This is a project or proposal for about 90 units and marketed for a 55-plus community. This, as you can see here, these are the renderings of the proposal. This would require a zone change from multifamily, or from, I'm sorry, from light industrial to multifamily, which would be considered to be a downzoning and to allow for more residential development in the north end. The, the other projects, or the second project is located along East Grande Boulevard. This is the reserve at Grande. This is at 1223 East Grande, as you see here. It's the southern portion of that large tract, that undeveloped tract there. This project would, is planned for 74 units, again, also marketed at 55-plus. And it would require a zone change from that agricultural district to a multifamily zoning. And also on the west side, there's that future extension of New Copeland Road that the developer will be responsible for providing. The, like I mentioned, we have these, these two projects seeking resolution, resolution of support. And they're both targeting the 55-plus community and then also the project one, Glenwood Gardens, is also implementing the north end goals of Tyler First. And so, at this time, it's recommended that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution in support of various affordable housing tax credit proposals and the approval of a waiver of development and permit fees in the amount of $500 for each awarded project.
Any questions for Kyle before we go to the two cards?
Yes, so we're voting on two different projects.
Yeah, in the past, it could be, the City Council can pass a resolution for one of the projects or, or it, you know, any project that you all feel is something we're supporting.
Kyle, if my memory serves me correctly, the one on East Grande was proposed last year as well. Has anything changed with that project from last year to this year?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any changes, but again, there's a representative here. Yeah, last year, we did have, we had a larger number of proposals last year. This is one of those. But last year, the City Council did approve one project last year.
All right, let's go to Darren Smith, Mr. Smith. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Darren Smith, 8506 Cary Lane, Raleigh, Texas. Represent Oxydome Development and Pivotal Housing. Yes, this project was submitted last year. I think the mayor and council decided to go with a particular development because it wanted to have, you know, certainty relative to Longview. This is the highest scoring development in the region. We're also, again, responsible for the road on Copeland. The church has welcomed this as a neighbor. So I think Longview will challenge the two deals here. We're very concerned with our scoring, and we still scored as the highest scoring deal. So Longview's a real challenge. Probably what we're doing. I just want to be a good neighbor in the community and want to continue to execute on this deal. So you still get a bite of this at zoning if it's not something that you want to do, but without a resolution of support, we're effectively done.
All right, any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, thank you, sir. Alan Knoll. Name and address for the record, please.
Alan Knoll, 3899 Maple Avenue in Dallas. So, as we mentioned before, our project got support from City Council last year. We got our award from TDAHA, the Boston, and we're working with the city right now to, there's some road extension issues and utility issues we're working through, but we're really excited about it. We really enjoyed working with you guys last year. And the first thing I did this year, when we started looking around at the sites, is I met with Mr. Butler over at the Tyler Housing Department and said, hey, you know, let's work together on something. He felt like there were a lot of good choices in the southern part of Tyler, but what he felt like was really missing was choices in the northern part. And as we started looking, as you guys know, it's, it's just a little bit more challenging to make everything work out in parts of towns that aren't quite as affluent. So, we found this site, as Darren alluded to, and they're great developers. I saw their presentation. I think they do a great project as well. Our, our real focus, we feel like our existing project down at Cumberland and Old Jacksonville Highway will meet the needs of that area. It's about three miles away from the site on Grande. We think, as he mentioned, if his project gets awarded or gets support, it'll beat our project. Our project will beat the one in Longview. So there's, you know, it's kind of down to three in this state. I just have some challenges that we've, we've been working through. It's, it's a smaller site than we like. There's sewer lines running through there. So our engineers, I think, have come up with a, a very good way to do it. We will also, the yellow road that's on there is city right-of-way, but the road's not in it. There's a brand-new sewer line that's, that's just been finished. So, an easy place to put the road and that everything fits. But, anyway, our, our goal, we're a for-profit, but we really have a passion for all seniors, and we'd love to get your support on this because I do think it really fits the need. We're, the reason we're a little bit lower scoring is we have a higher poverty level than Longview does and that Grande does. But again, I think it's something that we'd really like to do and we'd love to get your support on. Happy to answer any questions.
So you're saying that you can alleviate all of these challenges that you're experiencing in this?
We think so. There's, there's issues that we still have to work through, and our other side had some issues as well. We mainly need to relocate a sewer line, which I think is very doable to get all of our parking and everything to fit.
And these are affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am. It's 100% affordable housing.
Any other questions for Mr. Knoll?
No, I have one for Kyle.
I've got one. When do you have to have, on, on the timing of this process, when do you have to have all of that established to know if it's done or it's not?
It's a, it's a sequence of things. So the application, which, which you have to put in, it's due in about a week. So...
It'll be done by then.
Well, one of the things I'd mention, just that it would really help the developer community. Every city has to go through these support resolutions, and if there's any way in the future you could, you could hold the support hearings a little bit earlier, it would really help all the developers because we, we don't know who's going to get support and who's not. We have to spend a lot of time and money putting, you know, getting everything ready to go to turn in the applications. So if, if it goes right down to the wire like it did last year, then a lot of people just spend extra time. So the first step is to put in our application, and then we'll, we'll really see how we stand vis-à-vis the other folks who put in applications. We were working on a project in Lockton as well, and we just couldn't get everything to work on it. So we, we declined to move forward, and we're not putting in an application there. So it's a complicated process, but in terms of getting actual construction started, we have to put in our application, and we have to get it approved, you know, we have to win the point contest, get our allocation from the state, and along the way, we have to go revise the zoning and work out all the engineering. So it's, we normally don't see developers getting everything worked out ahead of time because there's just a lot of moving parts that are out of our control. So...
And, but, yeah, I guess that's my question. So that's not required for you to be awarded this project?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, obviously, I'd like to see this in my district, but I'd like to see us embrace both of these projects.
You know, we, we've done that in the past. It has probably been six years ago where we did a resolution of support for both. And I think, and Ed can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think because we showed support for both, we got neither.
We got what?
Neither. And the, the project in Longview, they had supported one specifically, and they were awarded the project. So subsequent to that, we've gotten to where we've, we've really tried to choose one that we really thought was, was more palatable, and one that we thought that the zoning, if it had to group, if it required a zoning change, would the zoning be changed? Or could it be changed, and is there going to be issues with that? But, no, we have, we've tried to support one. Input?
No, I mean, you're exactly right. It's, typically, council has either kind of given its support to, to one project or no projects. There've been times where I think that has happened as well. The interesting piece there is then this will go to the state representative, who then will look at it, and he'll also ask the same thing. I know in previous years where, you know, we've had multiple ones. He'll like, well, which is the one that the city supported? Because he's only going to do, if he does any, one kind of letter of endorsement or resolution of support for these. So they're kind of, it's kind of a chain reaction you create for all the other supports and resolutions of support that the project will receive.
You know, and just to kick off the conversation, in looking at both of these, you know, to me, just to be cut to the chase, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer for the Glenwood Gardens specifically because, you know, the Tyler First, 3,000 rooftops, the area, I like it. I think it would be perfect for this type of development. I'm not sure if, if the other one on Grande. I know that in the past, as it was discussed, there was some opposition to, to that site. So I'm not sure if it would, if it would even get a zoning change if it was, if it was applied for. So, to me personally, I, I lean towards the one in North Tyler, but that's, that's just me. And open up for discussion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to break, Greg, and, and I agree with Councilman McKellar. You know, Tyler is a winner with either of these two projects. The northern project does address Tyler First directly. The one in the south part of town would be just equally as good with regard to its, its impact on population and providing affordable housing and so on. Since both of these projects score higher than the Longview project, my thought is to support both. And I understand where you're coming from because we did do that. Matter of fact, it was right after I came on council. We, we supported both projects here, and then we didn't get even one of them. So I do understand that argument. But I would be in support of, of supporting both.
I like the idea of focusing on one, and I really like the, was it Glenwood? Glenwood Gardens? I didn't even know that land was there until I saw this agenda package.
I invite you to come to North Tyler.
I've driven by there many times. Well, you can't see it. I mean, it's, it's totally, it's obscured by all the commercial around it. But, so I, I think it's, I think it's using a piece of property that's, has been hidden, been underutilized completely. So, and I, and I do think we, we stand a better chance by focusing on one. The, the property at the end of Copeland's going to get developed at some point. That's, you know, this, this is one that's had the challenge, and I think we should put our focus behind it.
Any other comments? All right, we're down to making a motion to support one, or to support, support both, or to support neither.
Well, I'll start a resolution. So, so we would frame it as a resolution to support and name the project. I move that, that we support the Glenwood Gardens project solely.
We got a motion? Do I have a second? I second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of supporting Glenwood Gardens? I would like to go ahead and just do a roll call from Cassandra because of, can you do a roll call on this?
Sure. Councilmember Haney?
Aye.
Councilmember McGee?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller.
Since we only have one and that's in my district, aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Nay.
Councilmember Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Warren.
Aye.
Thank you, Cassandra. R1 is approved to support Glenwood Gardens. Thank you both for participating in the project. All right, O1, Kedrick.
Mayor, council, if you have a role. Before you is request the city council consider adopting ordinance amending the fiscal year 22, 23 budget to provide funding for, to complete various community development, block grant home, housing choice voucher, airport projects at the airport. Also, in this request, there's some positions to be added mid-year for water utilities and solid waste and code enforcement department as well. So typically what we do is, as you all are aware, we have three budget amendments a year usually. There's one just for general items and then the second one is for grants. And this is generally would be the grant. And then also at the end of the year when we adopt the next year's budget, there's a cleanup ordinance for the current year's round. So like I said, generally this one is strictly grants, but there were some new items that are not grant-related that we add in this budget amendment ordinance. And we'll briefly touch on those in the presentation. So we'll start out with housing. We're requesting $447,000 there. Most of that is going to go to add-in choice vouchers. CDVG, Community Development Block Grant, about almost 1.7 million there. That's for PT Code Project demolition of the young and add-in costs as well. Home grant, a million, almost 1.1 million there. The bulk of that is going to hidden palace, some add-in and first-time home buyers. Airport, like I say, this would have initially been in the first ordinance that we did. So there's a little cleanup here, but there's a power washer that they need, they have 16,000. And then general fund, police grant, this is something that came in after the first ordinance that we did. They requested some rifle shields for almost $95,000. Then water utilities, we're looking at 434,000, almost 435,000 there for four utility, we're requesting to add four utility account services and two meter repairment. What we're seeing there is on the utility account services, those would be guys that we're wanting to hire to do meter reading. We're requesting four position, but we currently need two. And the issue that we're having there is the MXUs on the meters are continuing to go out and we're having a hard time getting those replaced just through the supply chain issues. And so we're having to manually read these meters. And so the current meter reader that we have cannot read all of that. But also this will help provide a little bit more control over meter reading if we do that in-house. And also, you know, as far as the meter reading, we've had a pretty intensive plan over the last several years of trying to get the MXUs that are on top of the meter that sends the signal to the water business office for the reading. We've had an intense program to replace those and we spent quite a few dollars and we're just not gaining ground on that. So at this point in time, it's just better to manually read them and we can step back, determine whether we want to continue to manually read or look at a different system. The two-meter repairmen, there's a lot of work orders that are building up there. Our other crews are, you know, they've got work orders that, you know, they're trying to keep up with. And typically the meter repairmen, if there's something to troubleshoot or investigate, those are the guys that are usually pulled off to do that. So they're getting pulled off on duties that maybe you wouldn't say is technically a repair duty, but they're the guys that have the ability to do that. So we're asking to add, you know, two positions there to help them with the workload and to help chip away at the work orders. Solid waste, we're looking at adding a code service officer and an admin secretary, just once again trying to keep up with the workload in the city and keep up with the desires that you all have as a council as far as our city looks. And this is just something that we feel that we really need mid-year. Also, general capital projects fund, once again, that's a new item. You can see all of the items that are new we've got in parentheses there. 451,000. This is for, I guess, architectural engineering design for our downtown improvements. So that is a new item as well. The total of all these amendments add up to almost 4.4 million dollars. So what we're asking or recommending to you all is to, is recommend that city council consider adopting ordinance amending fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget to provide funding to complete various community development, block grant home, housing choice voucher activities, airport activities, six positions added for water utilities that include four utility account services and two meter repairment, two positions for code enforcement that included an admin secretary and a code service officer and downtown improvements. So that is staff's recommendation on item number one, this budget amendment ordinance.
All right, any questions for Kedrick?
I've got one. Now, Kedrick, I don't know if you're the person best to answer this, but so did you say that we're moving to all manual reading on the water meters?
I would say we need to, I don't think we want to box ourselves into manual reading. At this, for the last several years, we've spent almost a million dollars a year replacing MXUs and we're not gaining-
That's the device.
Right. We're not gaining any ground on our percent res. They're continuing to decrease every year, which means that they have to be manually read. Just because the MXU fails to send a signal, that doesn't mean that the meter is bad. We just have to go out and manually read it. And four positions, we could manually read the entire city with four positions that cost us 300 million a year, but yet we're spending almost a million dollars a year replacing-
For efficiency.
Right. So it boils down to common sense, we tell you that automated reading is the way to go. But maybe, and we've got some more investigating to do, the technology that we have just doesn't seem to be working. So either that's different technology or manual reading.
And we'd be doing all of that, that plan with city employees?
Yeah. We do have a contract meter reader. They cannot read all the, you know, the bad, the un-res that we're getting. So our staff is having to go out and read meters as well.
Right, I mean, but I mean going forward.
Going forward, yes. We do have another year and a half-
On the contract?
Contract. The goal is to eventually, we call that in-house.
Good. Any other questions?
We move to approve O1.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick.
Thanks, Kedrick.
Darren, come on down.
As y'all know, every year we go out with this for the new reconstruction of streets, asphalt enhancement projects, the oddx, the crack seal, all that. This is part, what this is, is the, consider the asphalt enhancement programs like this did before. What we did in January of this year, on January 24th, we opened bids for the asphalt enhancement project. We got three bidders, Reynolds &amp; Kay, LLS Equipment and Drake. You see the numbers on screen in your packet. But we also, we had three alternate bids in there. Alternate bid one was the Poluxi Group, which was Poluxi and Dennis, they're just going through the loop. Alternate number two, Flat Rock Group, was the West Cumberland area. And alternate number three was the scenic drive group, that's just scenic area west of the loop. And what we found out during the bids is, or after we took it, that we really need some drainage improvements in the, in the group two area, the Flat Rock area. So we decided not to go with that group and we just recommended engineering department review the bids and recommends not going with that group. So, and just as a clarification, what we did was what they, we say asphalt enhancement, what asphalt enhancement really is, is we're replacing the curb in that is broken in the areas. We're also replacing, we're overlaying the streets, we're replacing driveways, at least the driveway apron that's in the ride lane. And we're also replacing any balance damage. So all that, so when we go in there, it's all, that's what it all's included in this. We, as you'll notice, that Reynolds &amp; Kay was a little bit on everything, all across the board, made it a little bit easier, but we are recommending ones one and three. Funding for this is the first two items on the screen, about 4.185 million for the asphalt enhancement, but we had a little over half a million dollars for that high friction surface treatment we're going to do on the Grande reverse curb. That's included in here. And we also included for water department, some work for about $250,000 worth of work at Lake Tyler for that. And also we had about $38,500 in traffic department maintenance traffic. Not all the funds will come out of HACAM, only about 4.7 million remaining roughly $300,000 will come out of other departments, which you see about.
So Darren, let me ask you. When we do these, this work, you got crack seal, you got seal coat, and you got asphalt overlay. And the seal coat's the one that you put down and it's oil and you put that gravel on there and it's rough. So this right here is asphalt.
This is the overlay project we're going to put in. You have a seal coat, which is the wall and it's a little light rock on there. You also have the oddx, which is more oil than the rock. It's more just a sealant that's a little bit different product that we've been using and had very good luck with. This is even, this is more of an overlay, which is just another layer on top of the existing street. So it will enhance the cross section and extend the life of the street. It's a little bit more than just seal coat and a little bit more than just the, yeah, the seal coat and crack seals.
Yeah, this is the one people are going to think, it looks like a new street.
Correct.
They like this one.
It's not like open road that ended up rough because it-
We have been using a little bit higher, larger rock per the industry standard, text stock standard, we have been doing that, yes. Just extends the life of the road that was, it's a little bit larger rock.
Did you say we, sometimes we do, or we do repair drive aprons when we do these overlays?
We do the ones that are cracked that are in bad shape. We do, we don't do every one of those, only the ones that either damaged or in destruction or that are in really bad shape. But we only do it to the property line.
Yeah, right.
All right, any other questions for Darren?
Move to approve in one.
Second.
I got a motion by Curtis, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I got one question on the consent agenda.
Okay. I don't want to get a point of order here. Okay, he withdraws his motion. Which one do you want to talk about?
CA1. And Chief, I've got a quick question for you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay, we're pulling CA1 from the consent agenda.
Do you want to go ahead and consider the other items? And we've kind of gone-
Let's go ahead and do CA1.
Chief, just a quick question. What is the difference between the protective ballistic shields and then the rifle shields that Kedrick just mentioned?
Same. We came last time and did the actual resolution to finalize the grant request with the state. This is actually true to the money also we make purchase prior to reading, but they're the same exact price of shield. I point out that visibility to the office can carry them in the schools or buildings wherever they use the time. Same.
Because of the, so because of the cost, you have to approve that earlier you made sure that they went through there for.
I'm just curious whether they were one in the same or different descriptions.
Just different descriptions.
All right, thanks. All right, since we had discussion on CA1, let's put on that separately. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve CA1.
Second. Got a motion by Nguyen, second by McKee. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve CA2 through CA6.
Move to approve the remaining consent agendas presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items of note. We recently implemented a semi-annual preventive maintenance program for all intersection street lights throughout the city of Tyler. The traffic department began this process on Broadway and staff has already repaired 27 street lights at intersections along Broadway from Loop 323 to Market Square. This program is designed to improve public safety, security and visibility for both motorists and pedestrians. And also on the subject of traffic operations, on Friday evening, a motorist struck a traffic signal, knocking it down at the intersection of Broadway and Reek Road. Y'all may have seen that. By Saturday, the traffic team had installed a temporary signal to prevent traffic flowing. The new signal pole was installed Tuesday morning and the team immediately went to work installing cable signals and detection. The team was able to complete and install and get the intersection fully open by 4:00 PM on Tuesday afternoon. We had a great job by David, Cody, Carl and Jason of our traffic team. And then one of the actions that y'all took a while back was on assisting the police department in getting a police academy study that we would run in-house. And so we actually, the police department is excited to take the next step in establishing a regional footprint in public safety training. The first academy class of the Tyler Police Department began last week. In fact, y'all may have seen the cadets out there at our new facility we have between here and the police station. The initial class is made up of 16 cadets. We're excited to have cadets from Tyler, the Tyler Police Department, Longview Police Department, Smith County Sheriff's Office and Jacksonville Police Department. Instructors throughout the department, we've updated lesson plans and necessary paperwork. It's been a long journey getting to this point. We want to thank everyone involved for their hard work and professionalism in getting this done. And then finally, we just celebrated Valentine's Day last week, but one of the things that I want to mention of our staff helping others celebrate that holiday is we had ammo control supervisor Mary Fowler, our ACO Jeff Hammerbocker, and Tyler Police Department Officer Kerry Long went to Breckenridge Village in a treating dream facility. They passed out treat boxes to all the residents that lived there for Valentine's Day. They also went to the Veterans Home on Highway 271 and dropped off Valentine's Day cards for them. All three organizations were so happy to see them and thanked them for their service. And so we thank them for their, the efforts and positive impact that they're making in our community to celebrate just joy and love where they can.
All right.
I got a question. I was asked to ask for an update- I was asked to ask for update on the pickup, storm pickup.
Yes. So storm pickup, we were able to bring on two firms. In fact, I think Leroy's back there and Leroy can probably address it, so I'm not screwed up too bad. But we did have, we were able to get as far as contracts for consultants to come in, not consultants, but other contractors to come in to start assisting essentially the two crews that Solid Waste has for pickup. And so with that.
Yep, good morning.
Good morning.
I was excited. I actually saw the second contractor get here this morning. So now we have two contractors, our crews. We should be up around 150 to 200 tickets a day. So within the next week, we'll really see those tickets start to move. Just us and one contractor count around 50 tickets a day, which is a pretty small, you know, lot less on the productivity.
And Leroy, what was the total ticket?
2,400 is what we had.
So why were they here versus being out picking up limbs? I'm kidding.
When I say here, yeah, they were waiting for me on the yard this morning.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant here in city council.
And so one contractor brought three trucks. They're here this morning. And Friday, we'll add two more, so it'll be a total of five trucks from one contractor. We'll really start seeing the picking up.
So when do you estimate it'll be completed?
I'm thinking within the next week and a half, those 2,400 tickets will be done. And then we'll have to look and see because we're still getting calls about some that haven't put their tickets in. So then we'll, you know, we'll work on those that just now took their tickets.
Leroy, are y'all taking the material, y'all picking up to the recycling centers? Or are they full as far as the ones that mulch the trees?
Good question. So one of the contractors is actually a chipper, a mulch company. All of the recycled compost facilities, they will take mulch. But one of them is not taking it and is not mulched. So we're taking the clean loads to trim setters that's not mulched. And then of course, if there's some trash mixed in, it goes to the landfill.
All right. Thanks, Leroy.
Thank you, Leroy.
All right. If that's it, we will be moving on into executive session. I'm going to read this quickly unless Deborah clears her throat and I'll stop. The city council may go into executive session regarding any added posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Section, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of their government code. Executive item under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters deliberation regarding the following: employment, duties, and evaluation of the city manager. Any final action to be taken by the city council will be taken in open session. No idea how long this will take. It shouldn't be too long, so we will go into recess. Thank you. All right, we are back from executive session and we do have an action item.
Mr. Mayor and council, a move that we authorize the following amendments to the city manager's employment contract. Item number one, annual salary in the amount of $273,000 to be applied on October 1st, 2022. Item number two, deferred compensation deposit in the amount of $26,500 plus all taxes that accrue on that amount to be paid on or about March 10th, 2023. All other employment contract terms to remain the same.
All right, we have a motion. I'll undertake a second.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We have you for another year.
Thank you, sir.
I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
We are adjourned.